Good evening and thank all of you for being here tonight. Today is March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're here for our work session tonight on impact fees. Again, thank all of you for being here tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. I'm gonna open up with invocation and I'm asking Commissioner Cowan if he will lead us in our pledge tonight. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity, Lord, to give you glory and give you praise and honor. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for allowing us to be leaders in this community, God. Thank you for this community that we call home and we love. Lord, give us your understanding tonight as we try to take care of your discounting business. Bless everyone that's here in your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Again, thank you so much for being here this afternoon. We are here for our work session on impact fees. I'm gonna turn it over now to Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, citizens of this community. We come before you today with the work session in relationship to our impact fee program. At this time, I'm going to ask that Ms. Shayna Applewhite come to the podium as she introduce our presenter tonight, Mr. Ross of Ross and Associates. Mr. Ross will let us know where we are and where we're going in terms of our impact fee program by way of methodology report and capital improvement elements initiatives. So, Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. This afternoon, we wanted to bring to you the findings or results of the work that Mr. Ross has helped us with in updating our impact fees, as well as the CIE Capital Improvement Element Report. We have worked with several departments. We've added three new departments, fire, animal services, as well as the sheriff's office to this program. So they will be beneficiaries of the impact fees that we will be collecting moving forward, should the board approve that. So I'm going to allow Mr. Ross to come up and he has a brief PowerPoint presentation just to show you the updates that we are proposing for the board to consider. This will come before the board on the first meeting in April, April second, to, for a vote to be transmitted to DCA for review and approval. And then it'll come back to us for adoption. So, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, sir, and welcome tonight.
Thank you. Very, very happy to be here. It's such a familiar setting. I've worked with the county over the years on impact fees and it's good to see you're still using this building. I have a PowerPoint. I want to be informal. If anybody has a question, shout it out. Let me know. You don't have to hold your questions until I'm through, particularly, I don't want you to forget what the question might be. Otherwise, of course, we'll have questions and answers after, after this short PowerPoint. We are moving at light speed at this point. I know it's been quite a while getting to this point. And we have combined two studies, the methodology report and the capital improvements element, to bring them both forward at the same time to shorten the whole timeframe for reviews, et cetera. I had to go out and buy a bigger notebook with those two reports in there. They cover quite, quite a bit, but I will try to be succinct and, and move along. Where are we? There are basically four steps in this whole process. One is to develop the methodology report. The second is to develop the capital improvements element. The third is to work on the impact fee ordinance. And the fourth is by adopting the capital improvements element when it comes back from regional and DCA review. You would adopt that as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. It follows the same review process, if you will, with, at the region as your comprehensive plan did in the, in the first place. And the, well, we'll just move on. Here's, here's basically the, the whole process. We've done the methodology report that's available to you if you don't already have it. It has everything in it involved in calculating the maximum impact fees. So let me emphasize that. The law says you can't charge too much. We don't know what you will charge. You can charge less, but you need to know what's the maximum. So we calculate the maximum fee that you could charge in the methodology report. I think out of some fifty cities and counties we've worked with, I think only about three actually adopted the maximum. So you'd be in, in, in good, good company if you, if you reduce that. You don't have to, though. The capital improvements element is the document I just mentioned that goes into state review for the sixty day. During those sixty days, while DCA and the, and ARC are reviewing the CIE, we will get into the impact fee ordinance with you. And of course, a major part of the ordinance is the fee schedule, the fees you actually want to, to adopt and, and apply. And if everything works out as it should, about the time that you're ready to adopt the ordinance, now that will take two advertised public hearings. But when you're ready to adopt the impact fee ordinance, the, the CIE should be coming around, along about the same time. You can adopt them both at the, at the same meeting. Importantly, you need to adopt the CIE first and then the ordinance. And the ordinance, as I said, will include the impact fee schedule that, that you wish to, wish to charge. The methodology report forecasts future growth and development in the county out for at least twenty years. We calculate from that the needs for system improvements. Now, system improvements are improvements that, that serve basically the whole, the whole county or large portions of the county. These are capital projects that, that would be, be, could, could receive impact fee funding when you adopt the, the new, the new program. But as I mentioned, those are the maximum fees and we will certainly be talking to you about charging the maximum or whatever fee you wish to, to adopt. The CIE includes those population and housing forecasts drawn from the methodology report. It addresses what, what DCA calls projected needs for system improvements over the coming decades. That's also drawn from the methodology report. The idea being you, you have a current level of service out there serving the public right now. The public being businesses as well as residents. So we calculate the needs of the future to maintain that level of service you're doing, you're doing right now. You could increase the level of service. You could decrease it in the process of settling on an impact fee. But we start off top of the mountain, if you will. And as I said, this is about, the, the methodology report covers about a ten-year process. There's a five-year community work program in the CIE. It looks an awful lot like the one you have in your comprehensive plan. In fact, there were a number of impact fee projects on that list that we incorporated into the CIE. But the CIE only has to address impact fee projects. So you'll see a lot of projects in the comprehensive plan that aren't on there because they're not, they're not impact fee type, type projects. That CIE had that community work program. We cover the coming five years for new buildings, vehicles, parklands, library books, road improvements, et cetera. And as I said, that's drawn from this methodology report in the same format as in the comprehensive plan. So while the CIE is under DCA review in that sixty-day window, if we hear from them sooner, speeds things up, but we rarely, we rarely do. So during those sixty days, we will be getting into what impact fee schedule you actually want to adopt because that goes into the ordinance. We have prepared an ordinance that replaces your current ordinance. Rather than trying to pick through item by item things to amend, we took your existing ordinance and just elaborated as necessary to bring it. It's the same numbering system. It's the same ordinance number, but it, it has a lot of things in it, a lot of very minor kinds of changes. But a couple of, of important things that we will talk to you about when we, when we get to the ordinance. Now, the ordinance, as you already know, includes a number of ways that, that the impact fees could be adopted, I mean, could be reduced from the maximum. The first one I already mentioned, you just adopt a fee schedule in the ordinance with lower fees. The impact fee law, your law, your ordinance includes something called an individual fee assessment. Somebody says, there's something different about, about me. And so there's a process in which their, their actual use can be assessed and a fee established just for that use. There's also a section in your ordinance, and this, again, it's, it's there already, deals with individual appeals. Somebody can appeal their impact fee for any reason in the world. There's no, there's no restriction. There's a process. And if it can't be resolved at the staff level, it will come to you. But someone could say, my grandmother's having an operation and I can't afford to pay it, or whatever. It doesn't matter, any reason at all for an individual appeal. There's also an agreement process in which you and a developer could work out an agreement between you that if they would do this, you would reduce the impact fee accordingly or, or whatever. So that's a process. Again, it's in your ordinance right now. We're just carrying it forward. And also the exemptions. There are two possible exemptions. As you know, one of them is for extraordinary economic or employment growth. The other one is for affordable housing. And, and two, those, those are enabled in your ordinance, but they would require you to, to adopt separately what the criteria are. What is extraordinary economic development? And that would be, that would just be a separate action from the ordinance itself. Calculating impact fees. Someone had raised the issue of how do you come, where in the world do you come up with this stuff? And this is, this is in the methodology report step by step. We look, we get an inventory of what have you got right now? How many fire trucks have you got right now? How many animal control vehicles have you got right now? And that establishes a level of service for the existing population. Some services are only served to the residential population. Other services are served to both the residences and the businesses. So we, we determine what the population or housing units is that applies to this particular, whatever particular capital items you're looking at. We divide one by the other and that gives us a level of service. As I said, how many fire trucks do you have per household? I think it's gonna be point zero, 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 something. Once we have that level of service, we multiply that times the future population. The idea being that the future population should be served at the same level of service as the existing folks are receiving right now. Multiplying that future need times the, the, I, I have net cost in, in there because you have a SPOS program. To the extent that SPOS is being used to cover the same projects that are in the impact fee, we have to grant a credit so that people aren't being double, double taxed between impact fees and, and SPOS payments. So dividing those two out, we get the maximum impact fee per person or housing unit, depending on how it's scheduled. And I'll give you a quick example. Library buildings. You've got fifty-one thousand, two hundred square feet of floor area in your, in your, in your county libraries. There are forty-five thousand, sixty-two housing units in the county. The library, of course, serves the whole county. Dividing one by the other, we get this level of service of one point one, three, six, two square foot of library space per housing unit. We multiply that level of service times the future growth. We are anticipating thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-six new housing units will be built over the coming twenty-plus years during the whole impact fee time period. So that tells us that those future units would need to be supplied with thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three new square feet in order to maintain the same level of service as the folks who are here today are enjoying. We, we multiply that times the, the, the cost of a library per square foot. And we use examples of other libraries that, that have been built. And that tells us in this, in this report, you would need twenty-one million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand plus dollars to build future libraries to maintain the level of service. We then take that total amount, we divide it by the number of housing units that are projected in the future. And it comes up with a maximum fee per housing unit of, in this case, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. So that's a long-winded discussion of how we even come up with these, these, these impact fees at all. Bearing in mind, everything I talked about is the maximum and that will be up for your discussion later. Here are a couple of examples. If you adopted the maximum fees, for a single-family house, that maximum is nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. And the, the little box down in the, in the lower right-hand corner compares that to what's it actually cost the developer. That nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars works out to about two-point-two percent of the cost of the average new house that's being built in the county right now. We went back one year looking at all the sales in the county, not just for sale, but actual sales. So we knew how much money was actually paid for those houses. Others, also you see those, those percentages of how much an impact fee, well, for a general, a general office, the, the impact fee would be about two-point-four percent of the total cost of construction of that, that office. Again, these are maximums. And also, we compared the adopted fees of others, nearby counties, nearby cities, including Covington, of course. Covington just recently adopted a new impact fee. So we're, we are comparing your maximum to what has actually been adopted by these other, these other cities and counties. This comes from a list of roughly fifty cities and counties out there, but I tried to look for all of the ones that you might consider market-wise, the county's competition. And we also costed it out to compare a two-hundred-unit apartment, a sixty-square-foot supermarket and a forty-square-foot office building. Again, comparing your maximum to what other people are charging. And there are so many variables. Each of these cities and counties had different public facility groupings. They had different needs. They, some of them do not have SPOS. Your SPOS program really helped actually reduce the maximum fees because we can't have double taxation. We can't charge somebody an impact fee for a project that SPOS is gonna pay for because that new homeowner is gonna start paying SPOS. So we get into the calculation of, well, how much do we need to discount the, the impact, the maximum impact fees to recognize that SPOS is also gonna help pay for the same projects? They don't get a credit for SPOS paying for something that's not in the impact fee program. But, well, roads, for instance, you got a lot of SPOS money coming in for roads. So in terms of what's, what's next, there will be a public hearing to transport, transport that CIE to, to DCA and ARC. We will schedule a work session with you, or however you want to do this, to discuss or try to narrow down what are the fees you really want to charge. You can charge the maximum or you can charge less and we will work with you to find a, a common ground on terms of what your new, your new fees might be. The ordinance has been drafted. There are lots of changes. Many, many of the changes in the, in your ordinance are very minor. Some of them just capitalization. I tried to go to other ordinances and make, use the same formatting, like capitalization in the, in the, in the ordinance. So most of the ordinance coming forward to you is the ordinance you've already got. In some cases, we move things around for a better, a better relationship. There's some new things in there. And when we, when we get to talking about the ordinance, we will go through and let you know what's, what's new and different as opposed to just impact, just formatting kinds of stuff. So we have those two public hearings on the ordinance. If things work out, hopefully, and we get the answer, we get an approval on the CIE, then that second public hearing on the ordinance could also be the public hearing to transfer, transmit the CIE, to adopt it and transmit it back to ARC and DCA. And that haven't put you to sleep yet. Any questions at all, Mr. Chairman, or?
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I've got several questions. I'll start with an easy one. And you probably already said this, who hears the appeal on this?
Well, first of all, appeals would be applied to your administrator, who is probably gonna be Shayna. And, and she will try to see if there's some way to work something out. Particularly if the appeal is, you know, like, I got a pizza parlor, but it's not like that pizza parlor. She can maybe be able to work it out. If she can work it out, it's, it's done. If she can't, it, it will come to you.
Okay. All right. This does the adoption of a maximum impact fee have any impact on or limit any kind of growth in your community?
Well, I can't answer that.
What are, what are history-wise, what do you think?
The communities that have adopted the op, the, the maximum that they could charge, they've had no slowdown in growth, no slowdown in house building or whatever. I can't tell you that the same would occur here. That's really part of your deliberations of what will the market take, if you will?
Okay. And use, impact fees, I guess, are kept in a separate account to be only used for capital improvement projects. Is that correct?
Yes.
And let's see. Here's a, this is something that just kind of popped in my head. City covenant has impact fees.
Yes.
And they may annex some land into the city, but they don't take the road. We still own the road. Can we charge an impact fee on their development?
Yeah. Well, if they take the land, it's the land that's generating the, the, the use of the public facilities. Now, if they annex anything, that annexation, as I understand the process, is, comes to, to you for review also. And it's an opportunity for some negotiation of, wait a minute, if you take all those houses, you take the road too because we're not gonna come fix your road or whatever. I think, I think the road is a good example there. But there is, the whole annexation process does involve the, the county in reviewing it and being able to respond with regard to the impact on the county.
Okay, so you're saying we have to do a negotiation on that issue? So, but my, I guess my question is, can we unilaterally charge in addition to their impact fee, an additional cost? Because we're gonna have to maintain the road unless they take it. And they may say, no, we ain't taking it. Then what you gonna do?
Well, excuse me.
And a lot of this is on state highways and stuff, too.
The, the, the land that's annexed won't pay an impact fee until somebody wants to build on it. Once it's annexed, that impact fee would go to the city. Now, there are a lot of projects that the county has that serve the city also. And that opens the door to a co, a cooperation agreement between you and Covington about, well, wait a minute, you know, if, if this happens or that happens, we need to be able to both share in the cost of, of whatever facility it might be. That'll be up to, up to y'all as part of the annexation process.
Well, I'm more concerned about roads because the roads get potholes in it from heavy traffic and stuff like that. We end up with the bill.
The impact fees can only be paid for, or be, be charged for increasing the capacity of the road, widening it, building it in the first place. But DCA has determined that repairs, potholes, resurfacing are not impact fee eligible because in their mind, you haven't increased the level of service. I had a long discussion with them about a, a road full of potholes does not have the standard level of service, i.e. how many trips can you, can you run through there? You fill up the potholes, it increases the, the trips. They didn't buy it, so. Well, no comment, sir.
County attorney, who we got over there? Oh, hey. Can we negotiate those kind of things? Like for road maintenance and things like that?
So, you can, but to answer your question straightforwardly, the answer is no. Impact fees will only be paid to the jurisdiction where the property is located.
Correct.
Yes.
Unless we enter into some sort of negotiation on if we own the road and they own the property.
Correct.
So maybe we need to add to the ordinance some provisions of what we would be willing to pay for or what they need to pay for, or what we can charge for, right?
Yep, and that, that definitely can be included in the ordinance.
Okay.
I don't think it is right now.
No, I don't think it is either. And let's see. That's it? I got you. You got me.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Can you go back to the slide that states what impact fees are used for? I don't know who has the slide.
Oh, is this the slide?
Yes, yes, yes.
And this is just, this is just a few of the things that are impact fee eligible. I tried to kind of cover the whole, the whole subject.
My only concern with the impact fees for the community, I'm pretty sure you're aware of the makeup of Newton County where one side is most, more dense than the other. So the most dense side is producing majority of the impact fees where a lot of the homes So, the most dense side is producing majority of the impact fees, where a lot of the homes are being built, that's overpopulated, that has houses on top of houses. So, the issue is, and I, and spoke, speaking to other counties, normally, wherever the impact fees are created, it goes back into that area for improvement, for parks and rec, and so forth. But how is it actually outlined in those areas who may not have some of these things that impact fees go towards besides roads? So, areas that have, don't have parks and recreation and so forth. And that's the area that's producing the most, uh, impact fees. And I can't just say my area, because I was, part of my area was redistrict out to District Two. So, those areas are the ones that are producing majority of the impact fees, and they don't see the impact fees going back into their community.
That is not a matter of, that can be addressed in the impact fee program. That's addressed in your annual, uh, budget. When you adopt a budget, you set out five years' worth of capital improvements in there, and what, and usually probably say, now, we need a new fire station, and we want it over here. The impact fee just say, just says you need a new fire station, but we don't say where it is. So, that's up to, uh, the scheduling, the planning of the county to determine, well, we can, we can, we can build three fire stations, I'm making, I'm making it up. We can build three fire stations, where should they go? I can't tell you where they have to go, because that's fine-grained, but that's through your, your, uh, your budgeting process.
So, that falls under the county producing possibly a resolution or something to make sure it goes in the area? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if I understood you correctly, just to, uh, uh, expound on the, uh, uh, the annexation discussion. So, so that if any property is annexed by the city, that becomes their formula, their projects. The impact fees charged when, when building begins, it becomes their projects and their impact fee, in their formula for those fees, correct?
Yes.
And, 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 and there would be other negotiations between us, and then I would, I would say that that's, that's their, their total decision, so...
Well, there's an, there's also an area for negotiation with the city. Libraries. Libraries serve the whole, the whole county. In your, uh, service delivery strategy, or any other vehicle, uh, you should be able to open the discussion of, wait a minute, you know, we're, we're collecting impact fees for libraries, you're not. You want a library in the city, well, let's talk about who's gonna pay for this thing. And so, it's open to just negotiation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any more questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. First of all, forgive being late. I've been out doing a whole lot of stuff. I ca, I called up, you know, about fire station. I thought that there was, um, uh, recommended by the, uh, Fi, our fire services where a fire station should be built at, uh, for its ISO rating to go down. So, I, so I would think that certain places that doesn't have a coverage, because we know of our ISO rating, if we don't have no fire station, then the, then the premium for the, for, um, for our system goes up. If we have a fire station within the vicinity, then the premiums of our insurance goes down. So, I, I was just thinking off the top of my head, just coming on the, on the, but the end of the conversation, that, um, there had to be something to tell exactly where the fire station need to go throughout the county, so that we can have a lower ISO ratings.
Yes, and, uh, that's an item for your comprehensive plan to address. Excuse me. I believe you have a, a section in there about capital improvements in the cap, in the comprehensive plan. That's an opportunity for you to actually say, well, we need a fire station here, here, and here, if you want to include that, uh, in that, uh, that plan. The other opportunity would be through the budgeting process, and that's generally just a five-year capital improvements thing, but you can say in there, we need, we need two fire stations, we want one over here and one over there. So, it's a, it's a continuing kind of thing that blossoms, if you, if you will, through both the impact fee program and the budgeting process, and inter, any, any intergovernmental agreements you have, uh, with, uh, with Covington, or any of the cities. You've got agreements with all the other cities for, excuse me, for fire. You could be talking to, uh, to, uh, Covington about, uh, that also. Now, they have a fire station, and yours is sitting right in the middle of, of the, uh, of the, of the city, but, uh, that's open to negotiation.
Commissioner Cowan.
Sorry, got one more question. Can we use impact fees to pay interest on bonded projects? For example, we're about to build a new nine-one-one center that serve the whole community, but we're gonna have to probably take bonds on it? Can impact fees be used to pay the interest on that?
Yes.
Okay.
But only that portion that would be impact fee eligible. But yes, you can, you can use that because you're building something through the bond. Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we wanted to have this precursor, uh, so that Mr. Ross could provide an overview to the board. We will follow up, uh, with the Board of Commissioners and provide the report in its entirety. And then we will also schedule, uh, additional work sessions as needed.
And we're gonna present, you're gonna present the numbers then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Sanders?
It's pertaining to ordinances. Basically, it's, it's not pertaining to, to the, uh, impact fees, but based on ordinances. When will we have a scheduled workshop on ordinances based on the county to update that? As we can see, we have some information in front of us from the Stone Lee community. And so, when will we have that put up on the agenda, where we'll have a workshop to be able to look at our ordinances? Because I know we've had issues where people had things here in the county, and they wound up on the workshop agenda, and we discussed them immediately and got things changed. So, I just wanted to know when we're gonna have an update, so we can assist the communities who are having issues.
I'll yield to, uh, Ms. Applewhite on that. I know that, because she, along with the attorney, have been working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Um, we are almost complete with our RFP process to select a company that will help us update the process, update the ordinances. And we are looking to begin the actual update in July of this year with the new budget cycle. So, at that point, we do have public, um, meetings scheduled, similar to the process with a comprehensive plan, where we'll be in each district. Um, and there'll be other opportunities as well to get feedback from the public on, you know, concerns that they have, um, or they've encountered with the ordinance.
So, for this issue with the Stone Lee community, do they have to submit something to planning and zoning to be heard, to see if those things can be changed? Or they have to wait until the RFP to hire that person to look over the ordinance?
In an attempt to avoid coming before the board with multiple amendments, we, staff would want to do everything at once with the update. So, we are aware of the concerns, um, in terms of the temporary building permit for RVs on construction sites. So, that is one of the items that we will be reviewing to update.
Okay, so do you have an estimated timeframe when we get to that point? Because I, I know you, you're, you're doing your job, but I know residents will be asking commissioners, as we state, we have information right here, they want answers. So, is there a specific timeframe when we possibly hear something, when we have a workshop?
It would be on, in the second half of this year, once we start. So, when the process begins, um, in July, we will, they, we do have to have like an open public hearing for something like that, so, you know, commence the process.
Okay.
And then we'll be publishing the dates of when we're gonna have the various, um, district meetings, where we can hear directly from residences. We'll go into those districts, find a venue out there to do that. The update process is anticipated to take about twelve months. It's two chapters we're doing, we're reviewing the entire, um, ordinance, so it's going to take some time. But it also gives us, you know, time to gather all the feedback that we need. We're, we're not under the deadline like we had with the comprehensive plan.
Because the reason why I ask that question, because I remember in District Three, when we had a resident who was, wanted it, the ordinance updated in regards to him parking his vehicle in his driveway. And we got that on the agenda like that, and it was changed. So, I was just wondering what was the difference between those two?
Um, there is not a difference. If the board would like staff to go ahead and make that amendment, we could. But we were trying to avoid making, you know, several amendments before actually updating the entire ordinance. So, it, it is, um, you know, the board directs that, we can go ahead and amend this, just that section.
So, it's up to the board, and the board can move forward to make those changes?
If that is the board's desire, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is for Mr. Cooper. So, back to the impact fees. If, um, I, I don't know what type timeframe you're looking at for us to drill down and start to the nuts and bolts of impact fees, but when that time comes, um, I, I would, I would like to see, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I would like to see options one, two, and three. And your suggestions on how we apply these, these fees, and maybe even the formula, maybe options one through five. I don't know, but I don't know what that looks like, but when we get to that point, I'd like to see, have us, so we could at least look, um, as a board and, and be steering in a direction, and then we can work out the details, uh, the, the, the nitty-gritty details a, as a board by looking at those four or five examples, you know, so...
We can look at providing various options and the methodology behind it. That shouldn't be a problem.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. I, I just wanna say, to my fellow board members, we, we were placed here by the citizens of Newton County to make a tough, tough decisions. And, and help me if I'm, if I'm probably off-base, or off-balance, or talking about something, I may not, y'all may not have talked about. If there was a need in the community, when the community said that they wanted a fire station, unbudgeted money, we listened to it. And we all just came with the same, the right decision was, hey, let's go ahead and give them five million dollars to build that fire station. And so, when ordinance come up, that's our job. That's the job of the Board of Commissioners, my fellow commissioners, not to keep the can down the road to look at it and address it, if it needs to be addressed. At least get the people to vote. Now, Ms. Applewhite, her, her job is to bring whatever the majority of the board wants to be brought before us, in the way that it need to be brought before us. Those people need for us to make a decision, not next year, but this year. Not next month, but right now. So, um, you know, I don't know why we kicking the can down the road, for whatever reason. I don't think it's right for them. I think that's our job, to make the tough decisions. It's not Ms. Applewhite's decision to make it, it's for us, the board, the Board of Commissioners, to make that decision. And so, um, you know, I, I would, I would hope that Commissioner Sanders, with some or another, we could do a motion to ask the board, vote on it, to make that decision as soon as possible for the citizens of Newton County. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
This is for the county attorney to give me clarification. If I would like to add something to the agenda for us to discuss this workshop, to discuss the Stone Lee community situation in regards to the RV, how would that be done? Is, can I do that now, or can you explain how that can be done? Because these individuals are here, and they looking for answers.
Yes, so if you wanna add it to, um, the work session, it'll be the same way that you add something to a regular session meeting. You would make motion, and then have majority of the Board of Commissioners, um, vote on it. If it's approved, it'll get added.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to add, to amend the agenda first. That would be amending the agenda to add a discussion in regards to the Stone Lee community, what, in regards to Newton County ordinances dealing with RVs on private properties.
Is there a second? It's been motion, um, by Commissioner Sanders, a second by Commissioner Henderson, that we amend the agenda tonight to add discussion and consideration on what, what's the ordinance?
Consideration to, uh, amend the ordinance that we have in regards to RVs on private properties. Living, thank you so much, Commissioner Cowan, living in RVs on private property.
Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh? Want to make that, um... To A. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. I also would like to, um, um, make a motion to amend the agenda, talk, to talk about the one million dollars that the citizens, if we can, we asked, asked the attorney, the one million dollars that were allocated for Nelson Heights. And the reason why I'm asked for that, because the way that it's written, I think, uh, Mr. Cooper, I would kinda imagine, I, we had spoke a little bit about it at a town hall meeting that I had, was that all the rest of them said, it said, um, uh, it said Watch Street Community Center. It said, um, um, Arbor Cousin Community Center. But when it came to Nelson Heights, it said Nelson Heights. It didn't say Community Center. And so, I don't know, because of stuff that we had asked, really asked for the community, for the community center, was turned down by the SPOSS committee. So, I'm just figuring out, how can we take the money that we're supposed to be spending in Nelson Heights and spend it on the community center, not all of it, on the community center, not in the community, or some, to some other parts of District Four?
Thank you, sir. Is there, Commissioner Henderson has made a motion to amend the agenda tonight. He wanna add the discussion of the one million dollars from SPOSS, if I'm not mistaken. Is there a, for Nelson Heights Community Center? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson, and it has been second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner, now, go ahead. Commissioner Henderson, he was first, then I come back to you, then I come to Commissioner Cowan.
Well, yes. And, and I'm, I'm just, just adding on to it, because I knew a discussion was coming up, is that stop, we need to stop trying to take money from districts for its people that the citizens of Newton County voted on. When you take money from a district, you take money from, uh, from the community. From fixing the leak that we had a, we had a, we had a basketball tournament over at Arbor Cousin, Historic Arbor Cousin, it was leaking in on the floor, it got leaks over there. That money would've fixed that leak. We got a sign over at TK Adams Building that we all, everybody in Newton County, I don't care who you talk to about TK Adams Building, a sign there on the ground. And then some of it is my, it's not my fault. We should respect the ones who, who are here, and came before us, and one who passed on, the one who are still here. We should respect the wishes of the people of doing things for them. There's no reason why you, the, the children, uh, in our community shouldn't have decent playgrounds, such as Janetown. He was proposing that, and I had the meeting, and Mr. Cooper was there. He was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give the children in an unservice area a place to play the safe zone. And, and I, I get the feeling, this is J.C. Henderson, that we don't care about safe zone for our kids, at least the ones on my side of town. But, we care. That's why I wanted the discussion, and that's why I wanted to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
So, we just amended the work session agenda, correct?
Yes.
And we're down to ten minutes to talk about two subjects, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Commissioner, now, we're gonna, I gotta go through Commissioner Cowan, go ahead, sir.
Same thing. Don't get me wrong, I agree with J.C.'s saying we need to look at that. But, I'm not sure if we have time at the day, to, your, what you made a motion for, is critical. So, I think that we need, we got ten minutes to discuss the other. The other is more philosophical than, what are the things, uh, that are broken? What do you know, what do you know next, Senator? What's going next again? Fire, what do you know next? We need a motion for that.
We're still in discussion, hold on. Are you done, Commissioner Cowan? Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think that was my concern as well. I, I think this work session was centered around impact fee schedule update and capital improvements, uh, element update. And so, it seems like we're deviating from what this work session was about. Uh, and now, we're deviating from impact fees... Uh, and now we're deviating from impact fees into, uh, additions to ordinances, uh, as well as, uh, monies for recreational facilities. And so, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to understand is how, how are we deviating from what this particular work session is about? Uh, and now we're talking about incorporating two different subject matters that really have nothing to do with impact fees, uh, the schedule, or the capital improvement elements. It seems like these subject matters should be items that should be added to a regular board meeting, not a special work session over a specific subject matter. Um, so, I, I guess that's just what I'm just trying to put out there, why are we doing it in this session versus at a seven o'clock PM meeting where we should have that discussion about actual business of the county, not work session. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Real quick, I would like to, uh, ask that it be placed on the, uh, I'd like, yeah, next agenda that we did, that we discussed.
First meeting in April.
Thank you. First meeting in April. Uh, I shouldn't even be asking for it, because it should've been already just, just given to the district attorney, I mean, district commissioner, in order to distribute or give a list of stuff that need be done.
Alright, so, Commissioner Cowan.
Can I ask you something here? Can we just ask the county attorney partners to model draft, or revise ordinance, ordinance, uh, people living in campers? So, we got time with that, and the next week.
No, no, so, he, he can act, this is a discussion period, so he can act. No, I'm, no, I'm, he can, I'm addressing the commission, so he can ask his question in discussion period. Go ahead, sir. Are you done?
Yeah, I just want to get a draft from them, partners to make a motion, and bring it next week, and it's in April.
Are you making that a substitute motion? Y'all got seven minutes, uh, left in discussion, so if...
So, may I make a recommendation? I say let's vote on, um, Commissioner Henderson's motion, and then we've already approved item two A.
So, we probably need to vote on Commissioner Sanders' motion.
You already voted on that.
It's approved. We voted on her.
That was already approved.
We voted on her.
Oh, okay.
That was item two A.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Henderson's motion. So, Commissioner Cowan, did you make that a substitute motion?
No.
No?
And she's already got a motion out there. I'm just saying, if the expedite connects the last seven minutes of this board meeting, ask the county attorney to bring us up to the next gathering. We have to wait until this is settled.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a motion on, so what you gonna do about the motion? There's a motion on the floor, though.
Yeah. We're the motion for.
With Commissioner Henderson's.
Oh, is?
Yes.
Okay. I'm like a motion to the three years. There's already a motion.
It's already, it's already been second. We got it.
So, so just vote on Commissioner Henderson.
So, I'm gonna vote on Commissioner, I'm gonna vote on Commissioner Henderson's motion. Lord Jesus. Um, all in favor? It passes five oh. Nobody know what this motion is. No? We still, yeah, we still have it.
Now, we have agenda item two A, which is, uh, living in RVs.
Yeah, so we're gonna revert back to two A, which is Commissioner Sanders, the motion that she made to discuss people living in RVs. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, we, we all aware, try to expedite this. We all aware of the Stone Lee community's issue, been dealing with this for two years in regards to a resident who was, uh, trying to build their home, and it's been in, I guess, still a concrete slate for the past two years. So, these residents had to endure the eyesore of this RV, and the camper that's in the back, if you could see the pictures right here, and also it needs to be added on porta potties on residential area. Because as if you look at this actual, uh, what they sent us the photographs, it pertains to the porta potty. So, I did ask the residents in, in, in a, a meeting, I wouldn't say a meeting, in the discussion, how often has this porta potty been changed, and they informed me that no one ever came out to change the porta potty. And that's, you, you're supposed to have porta potty serviced. So, if no one ever came out to service this porta potty, that's a concern, that's an environmental issue. So, in speaking, in reference to the camper, Newton County does not have an ordinance in place to basically stop extending the amount of time somebody can stay on a property in RV. We have nothing in place. So, we need to put something in place to stop the extension. This has been going on for two years, and the residents in the Stone Lee community had to deal with this for two years. So, we as the board need to find out what we, not what we can do, we need to put something in place to put stipulations where there are terms to where an RV, living in a RV, can only be on there for a certain amount of time. And if you look at the information that they provided to us, they even provided solutions. I love residents who comes with solutions and, and resolutions in regards to what can, can happen and occur. So, that, that's what we're hearing, and what we're, what's happening right now.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
We got four minutes. So, uh, I, I agree, uh, this, this, this needs to, there needs to be a remedy, not only in, in this, in this particular incident, but, uh, across the county. So, I just shoved Mr. Cooper a note that says we need, I think it pivots off of what Commissioner Cowan said a few minutes ago. We need a draft ordinance that we can look at and throw darts at, maybe an email before we come here, and, uh, um, that eliminates this problem. Um, and Commissioner Sanders has seen firsthand what, what can happen. Uh, so she, she may be a good one for input on this particular, on, on the to-dos and not-to-do, as well as yourself and your staff, Sean. Just my suggestion, Mr. Cooper. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Make a motion as stated.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Edwards is second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, uh, could you read off the motion, and Commissioner Sanders, you want a date?
We got the motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson made the motion.
Uh, it, for, let me ask, let me ask a question. Is that feasible by the first meeting in April?
Um, no. We have to advertise it, sir. We have to advertise an ordinance amendment thirty days in advance.
Okay, so, but we can have it back here by April second for a discussion, right? A preliminary discussion.
A work session?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, I would like to add my, I amend my motion to reflect that, what Ms. Applewhite just stated.
Second.
For discussion on April second. A draft ordinance for discussion on April second.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you. Are you on the second, Adam?
Yes, sir. I second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion that we adjourn tonight. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Cowan. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.